But the consent did work.
I'll read this, I state your name, state your name, swear, and I'll go ahead and read that. You can do that. Right after we do the pledge.
Okay.
So how do we do that? I get up and I'll swear you in.
Okay.
Then you guys can swear at me. You're up.
Good afternoon and welcome to this afternoon's meeting of the Fairmont School Board. It is Tuesday, January 8, 2019. Roll call is all present, including our two newest members, Mari Myrens and Mike Edman. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And please join for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay.
Why don't we stand? Mike, come on up. You want to take pictures of these folks getting sworn in? We'll do it in front of the flag.
Is? No.
All right. One of you three go over here. And you know what? If you actually have your, well, you can repeat after me, that's fine. You don't, you don't, you won't.
I got my cheat sheet.
Okay, you can have your cheat sheet.
I'll share it with Mike.
I'll be a good listener.
Okay, okay, good. Okay, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Michael Rodriguez.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state.
And that I will discharge faithfully
I will discharge faithfully.
The duties of the office of school board member
The duties of the office of school board member.
Of Independence District 2752
Of Independence District 2752.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
Congratulations, board member.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go to work. New board members, make sure you sign both of these documents and leave them today.
Oh, okay.
So that we can get those turned in to Judy.
Okay, will do.
Work first.
Okay. Okay, so we first need to elect out.
Okay, I nominate Rufus for president.
I will move that nomination cease and that Rufus be elected president on a unanimous ballot.
Second? Okay, we have motion second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. And we have vice president.
I would nominate Nicole for vice president.
I'll second that.
I'll move that nomination cease and that Nicole be elected vice president on a unanimous ballot.
We have motion second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Do we have a second?
Second was, yeah.
Okay. Sorry, I was writing down stuff real fast.
Okay, and we need a clerk.
I nominate Dan Brookins for clerk.
And I'll second that. And all those in, oh.
I'll move that nomination cease and Dan be elected clerk on unanimous ballot.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
And treasurer?
I nominate Julie Lowey for treasurer.
I'll second that.
I move that nomination cease and that Julie be elected treasurer on a unanimous ballot.
All those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
We have officers for this coming year. Minutes from last time.
I move to approve the December 11, 2018, school board meeting minutes as presented.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
And next we have a green agenda with one change. Everybody have the change. Under the second page, under school board committee assignments, CER will be Mari. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to accept our green agenda.
I move to approve the January 8, 2019, school board meeting agenda as presented.
Second?
And all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Celebrations. City rebate presentation.
I guess tonight we have with us Jeff DeWor who performed the work on the LED lights, a local contractor who's been doing multiple jobs in the district throughout the years. And we were glad that they got the job because they do a wonderful job with making sure everything's cleaned up when they're done and they know our building's top to bottom. So that was great to have them on board. And we have Simpa here tonight to present a check for the rebate money from the LED lighting project. And I don't know if you guys want to speak or... This is Marcus from Simpa.
So this was a pretty long project. It was about a year and a half in the making, but from everything I've heard, it turned out very, very well. Some details on it, the rebate's a little over $152,000 for elementary school plus the high school. And it's just over a million kilowatt hours in savings annually. So to put that in perspective, that's about 137 of the average Fairmont home as far as the energy savings for the project. And so the high school got a rebate of $87,750 and then the elementary was $65,150. And I, some of them were just bulb replacements, so they might be three bulbs in a fixture or something, but it was right around or just short of 6,500 fixtures or bulbs. So it was a very, very large project. So we appreciate the efforts of the school district and of DeWor to put it in. And it's turned out great from everything I've heard, so thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We've got a large check. That's fantastic.
It is.
Okay, sure.
And Tyler maybe? Yeah, and DeWor, Mr. DeWor, DeWor. We're gonna photo bomb this.
I just love the ceremony of a large check. We get probably three or four a year. There's a business of creating large checks for people to go around with us.
Thank you.
I would like to mention that I would like to mention that we've done work with the school district for a lot of years. And no matter who's been in charge at the time, and there's been several different changes over the years, over the decades, the school district has always been great to work with. And that's something we can all be proud of. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Okay, Tyler, update on billing the grounds?
Yeah, I just thought while I was here tonight, it'd be kind of nice to go through this. I'm going on two and a half years since I replaced Dave Turnberg, who was the former director here at Fairmont Schools. And thought it'd be good for the public and maybe for the new board members to kind of go through some of the things, the bigger projects we've done over the past two and a half years. Just to show the public that we are trying to keep up on repairs and updates as they are needed. And feel that we are doing a very good job of that. I just want to first of all say that I want to thank the school board and Joe Brown and the business office for all their support since I've started. Very good support on the needs we need when we need repairs. Nobody's ever really told me no yet on a repair, so that's great. I'll just, I think you guys have a list of the items. I think Judy gave it in your packet. And we'll quickly run through that so it doesn't take up your whole night. But there's a lot of things I noticed today when I was going through it again that I did miss. But this is majority of the bigger projects other than the daily things that we're doing. But we had the tennis courts resurfaced. That was about two and a half years ago when I first took over this position. We built a tennis wall for the kids to hit up against. We did that in-house. We put in a bunch of portable bleachers at the baseball complex, including C and B diamonds along with cement underneath of them just to keep up with the weeds. Looks a lot nicer. We replaced the A diamond, of course, baseball, the main bleachers. And we also have four portable bleachers that are in place there as well with sidewalk updates to that area for people with wheelchair access. We put a new football storage shed up on the practice field. We just got done reciting the discus shed to match up with that new football shed out there in the practice field as well to make things look nice. We had a nice water main break when I first started and luckily got that repaired when school was out. We had some bigger trees at the elementary school. If you look closer to the building, that were pretty much dead, so we had those removed and we planted new ones to replace them. Typically, I've been planting double what we take out. We removed, let's see, where am I? Dead trees were removed from the A diamond outfield. And I'll get touch base on them a little bit later on some of the storm damage off of that. We redid the sign out by the Highway 15, planted some nice hostas around that and cleaned it up. Parking lot we added at the maintenance shop. We were getting concerns from the public that when we were parking out in the street at the maintenance shop, they couldn't see around the corner to Cardinal, so we added that. We've replaced one of our Raypack boilers at the high school, which is a water heater that supplies our building. We've replaced the dishwashing booster heater in the dishwashing room at the high school. We've added apple trees to the vocational wing. We added a handicap approach to the southwest side of the elementary school. We've added a new commercial steamer at the elementary kitchen. The old one went to pot on us, so we ordered a new one. With those steamers, we did put a new steamer at the high school last summer as well. And it was recommended that we put a reverse osmosis system in for those so they last longer. So we did that at both schools. We installed, of course, the LED lights in the buildings and they are currently wrapping up. They had a few parts to order for this last portion of it and they're working tonight and tomorrow night and should wrap up hopefully this week yet. We installed a gym curtain at the annex gym. We put a new shed and slab that we added for the greenhouse for some tool storage. All baseball dugouts were repainted this summer. Many miscellaneous classrooms we paint every summer. We're spending about 10 grand on painting every summer to catch up with some of the walls and make things look nice. We painted the metal shop. Many new welder outlets were added with new welders at the high school. We've added a new commercial overhead auto shop. Am I boring you yet?
Not at all.
Outlets added for exercise area on the main gym at the elementary so we could get some exercise equipment up there. I've added, we've added new exterior LED lighting to the maintenance shop. New LED bulbs to the exterior of the field house. These were both done in-house. You know, this wasn't a part of the LED project. So we're trying to make sure all our buildings get complete. And the littler projects will do in-house and get those complete. Walk-in freezer we replaced at the high school last summer along with a walk-in refrigeration cooling unit that sits up on the roof for the walk-in cooler. We replaced the woodshop classroom floor. We've done multiple roof rebuilds since I've been here and Dave started that before he had left. And we continue to do sections each year to keep up on that. We've repaired the locker room, lockers in the locker room. They need to be repaired again, but we continue to keep those up. We've added a new auto lift in the auto shop, new metal bandsaw in the metal shop, multiple air handler drives which handle our air handlers and our movement of air in the buildings. We've done a complete, everything's been replaced for Primex for clocks. All clocks have been replaced in the district. We did a YO upgrade automation system, which is our HVAC system. It's on the computer end of things, so that was upgraded last summer. We've added over 20 cameras over the existing cameras we already had. Installed safety sensor on the furnace out in the greenhouse as we had an issue last year with it freezing up on us at one point. So if something ever fails out there, we get warned on emails. New grease trap installed under the junior senior high school kitchen. Main drain line dug up over by the tennis courts was washed out, so we did that this summer as well. We've added new barricades around the auto shop on the outside perimeter of Bob Bonin's area just so that other vehicles do not get damaged in that area and they have their own little area to put their stuff. We added no parking emergency vehicle, painting in the horseshoe. And just to let the public know that we are no longer letting people park on the inner lane when we have big events because of fire trucks and any emergency equipment would not be able to get through there. So we're trying to get people to park back out in the parking lot. We did some assigned parking at the elementary school on the south side. We've added multiple coat hooks in the elementary hallways. Sidewalk was added on Cardinal Street. New countertops were added at the fax lab at the high school. We added new fire rated mats around the whole north gym at the high school for the wrestling program. We did two replacement of network controllers for the HVAC system this summer. We had a new epoxy floor in the concession stand hallway. We're in the process now of cleaning up the grove on the south side of the high school. Thanks out to Sentences Served because they're helping us out with that project. I bet you we've hauled 30 dump truck loads out of there that if you've ever been by there, the trees are dead. Some of them are dead and disleaning and falling. It's a safety hazard, so we're getting that cleaned up. And now we're in the process of the PAC remodel. And February 15th, if it's not on your list, we will be doing a lead and water testing in our buildings. We are due for that. So this year, so we'll be doing that on February 15th. As you recall, we had some storm damage this summer. And just some of the items, I quickly go through them, but we had $41,000 worth of estimated damages. We have a $10,000 deductible, so we're hoping to get $30,000 out of that to cover some of these costs. We had two portable bleachers that were damaged. We've replaced them already. The soffit and lights under the field house overhang, they were damaged. We've got them repaired. The baseball fence, if you had been by there, it was laying flat. We've got that back up and ready for ball, but we are, instead of the old wind screens that you tie on, we are doing permanent slats that go all the way around. They're a plastic slat. And then we'll have to add some trees back along there just to help out with some wind resistance with those plastic slats. So softball dugout was blown off. That has been replaced. Two ticket booths were damaged. They have been repaired. The roof fascia at the high school needs to be repaired yet. Waiting for some contractors to look at that yet. Gutters were torn off the back end of the shop and they need to be repaired yet. It got too cold on us and we're gonna be repairing that when the spring hits. Multiple trees were uprooted. We've got all that stuff cleaned up. The bigger track shed, which is located between the baseball fields and the football field, there was some roof damage, so we will replace that in-house this summer. And some tennis nets were, or tennis wind screens were ripped. And so we have those in-house ready to put up in the spring. So I just, I want to give a big shout out to the custodial maintenance crew. I couldn't ask for a better group of guys and gals. They, they take our schools, they have great pride in our schools and I hope you guys see that. And I see it from the director's standpoint. And they care about the buildings and they care about the people in the buildings and they will accommodate you when asked to do things. And I continually, we've had some new hires lately that has been a great mix with the ones that are there now. And I continually get calls where they find things that they would like to see repaired. And it's a good sign that they want the buildings to look nice, so I appreciate that.
Well, they're thinking forward.
Yeah.
You know, and thinking, maybe it's repairing something instead of replacing it later on.
Right.
And so, you know, that is greatly appreciated.
Yep. And I can't say enough about them guys, so, and gals.
Say, Tyler, what part of the high school building had the fascia damage on it?
It's up on the PAC roof, so it's on the very top.
Okay.
It's up on, it'd be on the north, kind of the northwest side. You'll see it from the parking lot.
Okay. I suppose that's where the wind came from.
Yeah. It's just kind of buckled out. It's not enough concern. It's more cosmetic than anything, but I just wanted to make sure we got that in on the insurance claim.
Sure.
Tyler, a couple of quick questions. I noticed there's a bunch of logs that the Sentences Served folks have cut up. What are they gonna do with those? Can people take those?
They take them back to their county parks.
Okay.
So any bigger, which is great for them, is they, they take it back and whatever needs to be split up, they split up and then they take it to the local county parks.
Excellent.
And reuse it, so.
Now, I just added a few more things. You also put three exterior security cameras on at the elementary.
Yep.
So that we can, those are high definition cameras that we can zoom in if there's any issues out on the playground. And then I noticed that your staff just completed installing the security curtains in the elementary.
Yep.
Those are the security curtains for the interior windows. You know, in the new section of our building, I see Mrs. Scott is out in the audience right now. Did you get a new curtain today?
I did.
Okay. Okay. And anyway, there's large windows. And so if we had a security issue, this would allow the elementary staff to immediately shut those curtains inside. And they're, they're curtains that you cannot see through.
Right. And they're, they're fire rated as well.
Right.
So there is some staff putting regular curtains up in them windows and they're not fire rated. So that also is a plus, so.
And then what percent of your current buildings and grounds staff have you hired?
I would say I'm getting close to at least 50%, 60%. Yep. So.
And I just want to, I'll do a shout out too. I know anytime I give a tour of either the elementary or the high school, people remark that, even going through the high school, they go, boy, this is a pretty new building. That's 1972, you know?
Oh, that was just yesterday.
Right. Right. And then the elementary is the same way. I mean, people are just really impressed with the cleanliness and the lights, the LED lighting.
Makes a big difference.
Makes a big difference. It really is brightening things up and so.
You can tell where it needs to be painted though now.
You know, what this reminds us is that, you know, we've got great facilities, but there's a lot of work involved, a lot of expense to maintain. And so, you know, we appreciate, you know, you sharing all the work that you do.
And I want to comment too on how quickly, anytime I've had a concern, we met with sixth graders, I think it was last year, and they wanted more four square courts. And we mentioned it to Tyler. I think the next day they were painted. And what I've had concerns about needing protective posts around the practice field, football in zones. And they were put up immediately. Or baseball fencing around the dugouts to protect the people in the dugouts. Whatever, anytime I've had a concern and I brought it to Mr. Brown or to Tyler in our operations committee meeting, it's been addressed immediately. And I very much appreciate that. And it says a lot to you and your staff and how proactive you are. And that's, plays a big part in why our schools look the way they do.
I think the whole school system is, I mean, the teachers are great to work with. I mean, everybody works well together and it's a great place to work. And I think we've had some great hires recently and I think we're very competitive with wages. And I think it's a good place to work, so we've had very good prospects lately. And so that's, that's helped a lot too, so.
And one more thing, the latest addition, Thursday night, we had a huge crowd at the wrestling match. We wrestle Blue Earth and of course, we wrestle with, cooperatively with Martin County West. And that was the largest And that, that was the largest crowd I've ever seen, even exceeding graduation. And the next morning, the first email I had was from a grandmother who was upset, flabbergasted, that we did not have baby changing stations in the bathrooms. And she had to change her grandchild's diaper on the floor. And so I immediately went over and talked to Tyler and how many did you order?
I ordered twelve.
Twelve. And so those will come here and within the next.
It's another, it's about a week out.
About a week out and they'll be installed, and so we'll install those in all the bathrooms by the Performing Arts Center for, by the gymnasium, some down by the, you know, by the entrance into the Performing Arts Center. We, we did find that we do have two on site, however.
There, there was a complaint with, by her as well as that she had heard there's none at the football field, but there is in the handicap bathrooms out there, so.
And these will be installed in both the male and the female bathrooms.
Yep.
There goes my excuse to leave early now.
That is correct, okay.
Tyler, could you just explain, you know, the changes regarding parking on the horseshoe for events?
We added, if you look on the inner lane, we added emergency vehicles only and we put no parking along there. We put emergency vehicles only because our resource officer parks there during the day, so he's there and so it allows him to be in that spot, but we just added painting markings in there for now. The custodial staff are putting cones out on big events.
Okay.
Till we get some people trained in that they cannot park in that inner lane.
And that's, that, that's the left-hand lane?
Be your left-hand lane, yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Just so, so people understand because it's, you know, they're used to parking, you know?
And it's not because we're being mean, it's just, emergency vehicles need to be able to get through.
That's very important, yeah.
If we were to have an incident at the school and the ambulance couldn't get through, then we've got problems, so.
Okay.
Did we follow through on that, the, the issue where we, we ran out of handicap parking spaces that night, where we have some temporary?
I addressed that as well, Dan. We have a, we've got some portable signage that we have around the district and we've got it sitting there to make an extra handicap stall when there's bigger events like that.
Great.
It seldom happens, it just happened that we had two or three big events that night.
Yeah, concert and a game, I think, yeah.
But we do have it out there now so that the custodial staff, we do have that big event, we can put that in front for another extra stall in there, so, yep.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you Tyler.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Sorry to take all your time.
No, I, I have, I have one other comment to make and I, I wanted to say thank you so much Tyler, for you and your crew, for the hard work you have. But we did promise our taxpayers, when we went out and had that preventative maintenance done, the levy that we put years ago already, I mean, to me, it's already years ago, but we, we told our, our voters that we were going to take good care of our properties, you know, we kinda let things go away. We are, are doing that and you can see that in our buildings and I for one, and I'm very proud of the way that, you know, the staff, the, you know, custodians, everybody does that. And I do appreciate, but I do want you to know that that was taken, it was taken personally by many of us on the board at that time. I know you do.
Yep, I remember that.
And so, but I do appreciate that, that, you know, we are doing that, we are, you know, doing what we promised our voters, so.
And like I've said, I, I've never had an issue that's come up where we say, nope, we can't do it. I mean, if it's something that needs to be done, it's usually taken care of, so.
Yep.
It makes my job easier too. Because I will tell you, I go to MASMIS meetings and not all directors have that support and so that's important that, you know, a lot of directors say that they, they can't say what they wanna spend the money on or need to spend the money on, it's, you know, so.
But it's because we take pride in our school district and I do wanna thank you and everybody in the district for their hard work in it. It doesn't, it isn't done by one person alone. It, it takes all of us to take care of our buildings, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks Tyler. Superintendent Brown?
Okay, first of all, enrollment report, I think you have that in your packet. Good news is, we're up four students from our last meeting and the big game was in the second grade. We actually ended up with three extra second graders, one extra third grader, and an extra eighth grader, and an extra first grader, but we had a couple of other students that left, a couple that left, so we're up four, so we're serving one thousand six hundred and forty-four students. And if you go to your pink sheet, the calendar, we'll run through some of the important dates coming up. First of all, tomorrow, at three fifteen, the school board members are invited to be with the.
I don't have a pink sheet, Joe. I do now.
Okay. It's not in your packet? Okay?
No.
Sometimes Judy hides them. Okay, the.
Sometimes the pages stick together.
Okay.
I have a sheet that looks like that's, that's white. Is that? Okay, I, it's the same one.
Okay.
I didn't realize there were gonna be color coded.
Okay, the pink, the pink sheet that you have, or if you've scanned your documents, then, okay. Oh wait.
I have that document.
That's what happens when you try to be efficient.
There it is.
It's right here, I set it aside, there it is.
Okay. Well, if you look down at Wednesday, January, that's tomorrow, at three fifteen, the high school, or the elementary E two staff are having a staff meeting and board members are invited to attend, that will be held in the Bud Room, which is at the new addition of Fairmont Elementary. If you're, it's always nice to come and sit and listen to members of the staff. And let's see, looking down, on January fifteenth, Mike is going to be attending Phase One Training up in the cities. Just a reminder to the, to the, the community is that when school board members first get elected, the Minnesota School Board Association offers Phase One, Phase Two, and Phase Three Training. Phase One Training is about a two and a half hour training session that talks about the, kind of the rules and the regulations, the dos and no's, the legal aspects of being a school board member. Phase Two though, is gonna be held on Wednesday, January sixteenth, and I'll be attending that with Mari and Mike. That's a eight hour session and that's to talk about the Minnesota School Funding System, which is fairly complex and, but it's a very valuable thing to do.
That's why it's eight hours.
It is. Well, it's, we have a very complex formula, very comprehensive, I would say, rather than complex. And then, of course, on Thursday and Friday, Rufus, Julie, and Mari and myself will be attending the annual Minnesota School Board Association Conference in Minneapolis. And on the next page, we have a policy committee scheduled for January twenty-fourth at four thirty. And Nicole, Julie, and Mike are scheduled to be part of that. And the other thing I have for you, I think we distributed this blue sheet here, this is a special invitation. If you have an opportunity on Monday, January twenty-eighth, there'll be a group of us attending, this is a two-hour meeting up in Lake Crystal Welcome Memorial from six o'clock to eight o'clock at night. This is similar to a meeting that Andy Trader and I went to at Hutchinson High School a few weeks ago. And this is really neat, this is the Department of Labor and the Department of Economic Development, they do a presentation and they also bring in some folks from a group called Cardinal Manufacturing. Now, that has nothing to do with our Cardinals, this has to do with a small high school over in Wisconsin that has kinda become pretty well-known nationally for their industrial vocational programs and how they are making money for the school. And so, it's just a great way to get an idea of what's going on in Minnesota, the demographics, the need to replace one point three million workers in the next decade, and we need to replace a hundred and thirty thousand workers every year now for the next ten years. And many of these folks need to have some type of a post-secondary training and this is a great two-hour presentation, but if you're interested in going, let me know because we'll probably take a couple of school vans. And we'll probably leave about four thirty, we'll get up there in five thirty, the meeting goes from six o'clock to eight o'clock at night. But I think you'll find this to be very informative, I've certainly found it to be good. I know we have some faculty and some administrators that are planning on attending, but if any board members wanna go, that'd be great. And that's it for me.
Okay, thank you Joe. Financial reports, Julie?
Are we turning this around? Usually it's the donations first.
Oh, that's right, sorry.
Sorry.
And we have a bunch.
Yeah, it's always good to, you know, get the support from the community and we're getting the new year started with a great list here, so. I will begin in Appendix A. I introduce the following resolution and move for its adoption, whereas the Schmickel Foundation awarded a fifty thousand dollar grant to the Fairmont Area Schools Music Department, be it resolved by the Fairmont Area School Board to gratefully accept the gift.
Second.
Roll call vote, Mike?
Yes.
Dan?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, Nicole?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Mari?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, we have Appendix B. I introduce the following resolution and move for its adoption, whereas the Martin County Youth Foundation awarded Fairmont High School a two thousand dollar grant to provide scholarship funds for high school students' basic needs, be it resolved by the Fairmont Area School Board to gratefully accept this gift.
Second.
Roll call, Mike?
I'll abstain.
Okay. Dan?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, Nicole?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Mari?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Appendix C, I introduce the following resolution and move for its adoption, whereas Fairmont Athletic Booster Club made donations during the year two thousand eighteen totaling thirty thousand, five hundred eighty-one dollars and ninety-two cents, some of which are listed on our agenda somewhere, be it resolved by the Fairmont Area School Board to gratefully accept this gift.
Okay, Mari, we have a second, roll call, Mike?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, Nicole?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Mari?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Appendix D, I introduce the following resolution and move for its adoption, whereas First Congregational United Church of Christ donated two thousand six hundred dollars to the student lunch program Angel Account, be it resolved by Fairmont Area School Board to gratefully accept the gift.
Second.
We have a second, roll call vote, Mike?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, Nicole?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Mari?
Aye.
Motion passes.
This is what, the third year that we've had the Angel Fund?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it's doing great work, appreciate that. Appendix E, I introduce the following resolution and move for its adoption, whereas Kaler Automation donated one thousand three hundred forty-five dollars to Fairmont High School to be used to purchase gifts for students and families in need, be it resolved by Fairmont Area School Board to gratefully accept the gift.
Second.
Roll call vote, Mike?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, Nicole?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Mari?
Aye.
Motion passes.
I could just keep doing this all day.
You gotta roll?
You're gonna have to.
I introduce the following resolution and move for its adoption, whereas individual Cub Scout members of PAC fifty-seven donated one hundred nine dollars and sixty-nine cents to the CER Youth Scholarship Program, be it resolved by Fairmont Area School Board to gratefully accept the gift.
Second.
Roll call vote, Mike?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, Nicole?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Mari?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, Appendix G, I introduce the following resolution and move for its adoption, whereas United Methodist Church of Fairmont donated fifty dollars to the Fairmont Elementary School Elf Shop, be it resolved by Fairmont Area School Board to gratefully accept the gift.
Second.
Roll call vote, Mike?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, Nicole?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Mari?
Aye.
Motion passes.
And in Appendix H, I introduce the following resolution and move for its adoption, whereas an anonymous donor donated fifty dollars to the student lunch Angel Account, be it resolved by Fairmont Area School Board to gratefully accept the gift.
Second.
Roll call vote, Mike?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Nicole?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Mari?
Aye.
Motion passes. Joe, maybe you can just remind us what the Angel Account is so that.
Yeah, the Angel Account is a fund that was set up a few, three years ago now for, if you remember, there was a big story throughout the state of, there were some school districts, not ours, but there were some school districts that were not feeding students if they had negative fund balances in their lunch account. And so, there were some community members that when they read that story that went viral, they asked if they could assist. And so, there have been a number of individual groups and churches and individuals that have simply, every once in a while, they'll donate money into the Angel Fund and then that money is, is made available to parents that have a negative fund balance, that do not qualify for either free or reduced lunch. They may qualify, usually they don't qualify, they're very close, but they still have a tough time paying for the child or children's meals. And so, and I will tell you, Mary Cole, who works in our district office, does a great job keeping track of, of who's not paying on time. And I know, for example, I was with a colleague of mine in one of our conference schools and they had an eighty thousand dollar deficit in their lunch account. Mari, you're shaking your head, you may have some.
Was it Lakeville?
No, it was one in our conference, one of our conference schools. Anyway, I won't mention who they are, but we don't have, our, our, at the end of the year, we may have a thousand or fifteen hundred dollars still negative because of the Angel Fund. The Angel Fund is very important and, you know, we wanna make sure that all of our children that come to our school, we don't wanna, we, we want every child to be able to eat and, so.
Well, and then, and then besides that, I, I believe Mary then will, if it's somebody who is, you know, come behind in their funds or whatever, she'll work with them to see if there's other avenues that they can use to help them as well, or they can apply for free and reduced, you know, even through the month and, you know, through the school year, so.
Yeah, that is, that's a good point because sometimes jobs will change or the family structure will change. And so, once, and many times when you're going through a stressful situation like that, the last thing you're gonna think about is your child's lunch account when, and then when Mary catches that, and she catches it, when it goes below five dollars, that's when she starts contacting people, I mean, seriously, and.
So if members of the community wanted to contribute, how would they do that?
They would simply send a check to the district office and just list it as Angel Account, like Fairmont Area Schools, and then in the memo line, just write down Angel Account.
Okay, very good.
Yeah, very good.
Okay, so now we're back on track with financial reports, Julie.
Yes, thank you. Okay, now in your packet, you have bills or checks and that from two weeks ago because we, or, it was about two weeks, it was Christmas Day actually was when the last board meeting could have been, but we didn't meet because we usually traditionally have only one meeting per month. So you do have two rounds of checks in your packet. First thing here, and I'm reporting tonight because Bradley's not available tonight, so there is, transfers wires for December seventh to January third, nothing much really in there, just the regular me, bills and all that that we transferred funds for. And then in the single checks in, and that one is dated November thirtieth, and the only thing in that one is, is that this is something new that Bradley has brought forth for our funding, and one of the listings is NSF checks. And he looks at that as a better way to keep track of the non-sufficient funds. And I just questioned it because I wasn't sure what it was and that, but it's just using it as a, a way to keep track of that a little bit better than just debiting it, so, okay?
Okay.
And then P card, that again is from December fifth, I didn't see anything in there to bring forth, if you have any questions, anything, many times the P card is what is used for purchases that are done on a day-to-day basis within the district and that, it's with a purchases that are done on a day-to-day basis within the district, and that is with a credit card, a credit card like, but it's a debit card out of the district funds. And then, then is the December 25th, 2018 bills, and I think there was one or two in that one, it was way late in the month. Yeah, check number 62094, Riverland Community College, this is fall concurrent enrollment is what it's for, is college in the school's class with welding, Bob Bonin, Bonin has, have that in his class, and that includes multiple students for that amount. And then also, the seating and athletic facility enterprises, two portable bleachers that were purchased to replace a damaged one. Okay, otherwise, that's all I had on that check register, and then I have the check register for today, January 8th, 2019, and my notes, my cellphone went, there we go, I got it back, went on the blank, and I didn't get it entered in, but let's look and see what I discussed here. Oh, that was the non-sufficient, the NSF check that I talked about already, and then the other one, 62116, Illusion, Illusion Theater and School, that is a group of a dozen Project Trust kids who will go into training in a future performance, they will bring into the elementary schools in the spring called Safe Sex, Safe Touch, and something along that line, it's, will be, but that was interesting to hear what that would be, and then in 62125, Minnesota Music Educators Association, Emily Labus, Kim Bremer, and Elizabeth Schimman, our music teachers, will be going to a conference on that, so. Any other questions or anything?
You know, Julie, you mentioned the college welding class, just a reminder to the community, I know there was a photo of the paper in Monday's paper?
Yes, it was Monday's paper, I saw it.
About the Saturday welding class that started again on Saturday, and that's really unique in that we have 17 students taking that class, four are from Martin Luther, two are from Blue Earth, two are from Fairmont, but there's nine adults, and so, there's more adults than there are regular high school students, and there's one female, and there is still room for three more people, and we did have interest by two additional folks that have contacted us, so, that's a nice class, if you're around on a Saturday sometime, I stayed in town on Saturday, and I actually went up and took some photos too, not as good as the photo that was in the Fairmont paper though. That was a really good one, but it was really nice to see that, it was really nice to see our students and our adults in the community getting trained, because we need welders all over the region.
Exactly, and it's, it's just, it's, it's a, it's a need for our community in that, and what I, I like is that Bob has taken this, or Mr. Bonin has taken this class and has reached out and has kind of done some of the non-traditional times and that, so we're meeting the needs of those people, you know, maybe those people who are taking it, especially the students, are taking other classes, Monday through Friday, you know, the, the parents or the, the adults that are taking, they've got another job or something Monday through Friday, so a Saturday class meets their needs, and so, I really look forward, and, and that's what we'd like to do with our teachers and that, is to, you know, think outside the box, think how we can help our, our community, help our students, and, you know, help other families, you know, and we've talked about that before, opening up to other districts and that, bringing, you know, students in, and what is it, is it maybe an evening class, is it maybe like a Saturday class such as, as this, but whatever we can do, we can bring them in and we can meet the needs of our community, because we need to enforce and help them to be the better people that we can be to help others, so, I really think that's important.
Yeah, and I think, you know, I think the welding class is just a wonderful example of, of the possibilities of, you know, creating a learning opportunity, whether it's for our students or for members of the community, members of other districts. You know, we have tremendous resources and, you know, and they lay idle on the weekends and the evenings and during the summer, and so, we, we, we hope to explore all kinds of opportunities to open up the district for, you know, for the benefit of our students and the community.
This is, this is our community schools, you know, this, this isn't just the elementary school, this isn't just the high school, this is for our community as well, and so, if we can do this, reach out and do, you know, touch somebody and get them in, involved in a, a learning opportunity, we need to do that, so...
Okay, so, where the heck are we?
Oh, I think I need to do a motion. So, I will offer a motion to approve the December 2018 single checks, the wire transfers for December 7th, 2018, to January 3rd, 2019, and the payment of the bills for December 25th, 2018, and January 8th, 2019, and then I would just like to say that, you know, I did meet, so the bills were mailed and stuff on that day and as, as we normally traditionally do, so...
Second.
Motion to second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
And I'm gonna interrupt real quick, because we want to take a photo of the whole board before they leave, and I know Dan has a commitment, so, can we do that right now?
Sure.
Okay, how do you want to do it? You wanna?
Stand up here?
Yeah, stand up, I think we had three before, and you stay here.
Okay.
Put our mics down, and... I forgot who was in the back last time. You can be the French one. Tell us when. Do you want us to hold, put these down?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, let's put these down. Tell us when.
One, two, three, do at least one more here. One, two, three.
Okay, thank you, aye. Thanks, Dan.
Okay, back to business.
School Board Committee Reports.
Now, we got new business.
Yep.
Okay, so... So, we have worked with board members and superintendent to figure out who will serve on the various committees, and that is all in your agenda, so I will make a motion to approve the committee assignments outlined in the agenda for the 2019 school year.
All second.
And we have a motion to second, all those in favor?
Discussion, I have a question.
Sure.
Do we follow Robert's rules?
Yes.
Okay.
So, on the discussion part, I'm fine with the idea that I would be a legislative rep contact, but I, I do want to know what that is before I agree to do it.
Sure. In the past, that's simply been, usually we assign one board member to, who may have some interest in contacting Representative Gunther or Senator Rosen, and, and then throughout the year, there are times in which certain school districts, based on region, are asked to go and spend a day at the Capitol, and we thought, Mike, with your background, serving as a legislative aide at one time?
Sure.
You'd be a perfect person for that.
Yeah, I've got a great relationship with both Representative Gunther and Senator Rosen, I just wanted to make sure there wasn't something else other than that, so...
Are you afraid it was a trick question?
Trying to trick the new guy, I, I don't know, but yeah, that's, that's, that's what I thought it was, that's perfect, thank you.
And as long as we're talking openly about this, we did add one additional assignment here, I had talked to Mike earlier when we met, and Mike is, he'd like to be the liaison with the community center group here, and we've never had that position before.
Well, we've never had the discussions that we've had with the community center either, so...
That's correct, and so, that's a nice place for Mike, and of course, otherwise, and the only change that we made on the green sheet is that Mari is gonna take over for community ed in lieu of Nicole, okay?
And then, you know, Mike, as far as the legislative representative, you know, you know, whatever, with your experience, with your contacts, if there is, you know, an area that, you know, to explore that would benefit the district, you know, we'd, we'd welcome your, you know, your thoughts and your input.
No problem.
Okay, good. Okay, so, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Nicole, hockey fees.
Yes, it was brought to our attention, I believe by a parent, is that right, Joe?
Yes.
That the hockey fees for the players this year were set at $350, whereas most all other sports for varsity were 130 or less, except in being football, which I believe is at 135, and they asked the committee and the board to explore why that was, and if there could possibly be a change, and after much discussion, as an operations committee, we agreed with the, with the parent that the hockey players should be assessed the same fee that other varsity players are assessed, and when we discussed that, there was, we, this, this year is our, I believe our first year where we are, the Hockey Association and the Fairmont Area Schools hockey team are separate, previously, it was run by the Hockey Association, and there's, there's been a gradual transition over, I believe, three years to, to make that complete separation, and so, in, in investigating this fee and, and doing more research, we discovered that there are, that there were still some overlaps that shouldn't be occurring, and so, we met with the association, and it's now clear that for, when players play hockey for the Fairmont Area High School, there is no association or dependence upon participation in the Fairmont Hockey Association. For example, to play Fairmont Area Schools hockey, you do not have to sell or are not required to sell a Fairmont Hockey Association book, it would be completely voluntary, and parents don't, are not required by the Hockey Association to work at concessions, that would be voluntary, because there is a separation, and prior to playing...
Are there any participants that are not members of the Hockey Association?
I don't, once you play Fairmont hockey for the schools, you're not part of the association, I don't believe, it's just like with basketball...
It's trying to separate it.
And football, whereas...
Versus the traveling teams versus, you know, for football, or basketball, versus the basketball, you know, traveling teams, I mean, we're trying to separate that, and I, I appreciate that, I really do.
The association, I think, takes, takes it up to about the age of 14.
Right, prior to playing for the high school team, they are members of the association, they play with the association, when they're in high school, there are no association tournaments for high school players.
That's right, you're under the Minnesota State High School at that point.
Right.
Whereas, when you're playing youth hockey, it's the Minnesota Hockey Federation.
Hockey Association.
Hockey Association, yes.
And therefore, there needs to be a, a clean split, a clean line, if they want to volunteer, that's fine, and up until the time that they play for the high school, they can be involved in the association and required to participate as much as the association deems, that's their jurisdiction.
And where this comes from is about 25 years ago, when, when Fairmont was approached to bring hockey to a varsity sport, it was said that, yes, you can, but you have to pay for it, and over the past four years, we've completed that transition now to where is, it is now just on the same ground, and then soccer similarly initially was run through the association, but is now part of, of Fairmont Schools, so...
Right, so, it's, it's treated the same as any other sport, and there are some agreements that we have with the association where, like, the school will not pay for the ice, that's, that's part of the association, but that was determined at the original, when it was originally decided three years ago about how to go about this agreement, so it was just, it was a good meeting to have, to, to clear some things up for both parties, and, and if the board does approve tonight, this $130 activity fee that will be set for the current year, therefore, those parents who have already paid the $350 will receive a $220 refund from the school.
Nice.
So...
Okay, very good.
I do have a question, though, how was it decided, if football is $135, how was it, I mean, there's gotta be some background there with that.
Just a slight, just more of a cost for equipment for football?
Well, isn't there a cost for equipment in hockey?
Not much, we, I was surprised.
Really?
Because hockey has to buy so much of their own.
The Hockey Association does buy a lot of the equipment for the youth players.
As part of our, we are purchasing new hockey goalie equipment at a few thousand dollars, and then we have now put them into the same cycle for uniform replacement for all teams, and in white, football's $5 more than everything else, we don't have the history of that, and the only reason why we set the rate at 350 is that, that's what the association charged last year, so we simply transferred those same numbers over.
Sure, and, I mean, and I think that's kind of what we would have, could have naturally have done, but...
Yeah, you could, you could just ask Matt Mahoney what the, what the charges for, I'm sure he'll tell you.
But, but football is the only one that's 135, and we did do a survey among our conference schools to find out, you know, what the rates are, and, you know, some schools are higher, some schools are lower, the $130 is about average.
Medium.
And of course, just a reminder too, that if a child qualifies for free or reduced lunch, or if there's a financial hardship, they can ask for consideration for the fee to be waived, and we're very, we want our students to participate, and over half of our students do participate in a fall or winter activity.
Yep.
Yep.
Thank you.
So, with that, I move to approve setting the annual fee for boys and girls hockey at $130 effective for the 2018-19 school year.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, no personnel issues.
Thanks, Dan.
Thanks, Dan. We have board committee reports. Anybody from operations, other than Dan?
I was there, talked about hockey with the Hockey Association.
Okay.
Sounds like that was a pretty in-depth meet, I mean, and I, I, like I said, I really do appreciate the list that is presented in here of the things that you went back in and looked at, and I think it's just fairer for everybody to have that, those things kind of more cleaner split, so...
Okay, and the board, high school, student breakfast, Mari?
We met on the 19th, and while I was there, there was a couple of the reg, there were a couple of the regulars on the 19th when we met in the morning, we talked about with a couple staff members about the money, the $600,000 that's set aside for classrooms, not during the traditional eight to three timeframe, like the welding class, trying to get people thinking about other things that we can do and teach at that time, we also went over ACT and MCA scores with the kids, some of the ones were younger, but, and that's about when I left, so I don't know if you have something else you want to add?
I think, you know, we had some of this discussion earlier with, you know, when Julie was talking about the welding class and, you know, and opportunities for weekend, evening, and summer educational experiences, so that's, you know, so, you know, we had set aside $600,000 in the budget to fund, you know, these initiatives, and we're looking for the faculty to come forward with, with ideas, and a few people, a few faculty have come forward and, and with some, you know, creative ideas, and we're looking for more ideas, and as I say, you know, in our earlier discussion.
We're willing to listen to anything, you know, really, if, if we can, you know, meet the needs of our students, our, you know, community members and that are looking for something, we're willing to, to listen to anything, there are no dumb ideas or anything like that, and, you know, if we got the funding and we can meet the need, why, we will be there.
You also talked about, Rufus, you also pleaded once again with the faculty, and I'm sure we'll do the same thing tomorrow when we meet with the E2, that we encourage the faculty to come and talk to individual board members about different ideas they may have, and about whether it's curriculum ideas, or scheduling ideas, or just different ideas, because we want to have a very open and transparent relationship with our staff.
Right, I mean, and just as we partner with the community, you know, we, we're not gonna be successful unless we have a collaborative, open dialogue, relationship with, with the faculty, administration, school board, parents, students, and so, that's why the school board, you know, has periodic meetings, you know, with the students, to, you know, to find out, you know, how we're doing, you know, they're our customer, the teachers, you know, they're, you know, in some respects, you know, our customer, you know, they're our employees, but, you know, we are, they're part of the team that, and we're all responsible for the education of, you know, our, the students in our district, and so, you know, again, once again, I appeal to, you know, faculty to, you know, to come forward, you know, to speak with individual board members, or to request a meeting, you know, to, just to try to create that collaborative relationship. Okay, so, Southern Plains?
Yes, it's Southern Plains, you know, I, I was not able to be at the, the December 20th meeting, I was with my mom at a, at a doctor's appointment in Sioux Falls, but we did discuss quite in extensive, you know, the regular normal things, but also what was discussed, it included a lot of the, the, the building and stuff that we're going under, so, you know, the bids and that were being brought forth, and then in fact, then I was able to make it to the January 2nd meeting, and that again, too, was a little bit more on the building and stuff like that, and so, we will have another meeting, and I believe right now, we are going to be having, you know, more monthly meetings and that. Normally, the Southern Plains meets nine to 10 times a year, and we'll be going to monthly meetings until this project is completed, so...
What is the expected completion date?
October.
Of 2019?
Hopefully, that it, yes, of 19, we're hoping that it'll be done before MEA, and that we'll be able to move the students and, and those classrooms will be moved into, and then be ready for occupation, occupancy, that's a correct word, right after MEA, so...
Have they renamed the school officially?
You know, we did rename it, I think, and I can't think of what it is.
So, is it still Southern Plains Board Meeting, or do they call it something different now?
Are you gonna say something?
Yes.
I can't remember, but, yeah.
The Phoenix is their mascot.
The Phoenix is the mascot, but...
Phoenix Academy.
It's, it's...
We'll get back to you.
I just wondered if we're supposed to call it something else now, instead of Southern Plains Board?
No, Southern Plains will...
Southern Plains is still Southern. Southern Plains is still Southern Plains.
Okay. The school name has just changed.
Yeah, the school building-
Is it Phoenix?
Phoenix, but is, is that the mascot, or is that, no, it's something with a phoenix, too, but I can't remember, but...
Starts with an A.
I can't tell.
We'll, we'll have to call a friend and get back to you.
Yeah, can I use one of my?
Cliffhanger.
Tune in, tune in in two weeks.
Hold this on the next agenda.
Tune in in two weeks.
Okay.
I'll go back through my...
Any other business? I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
Second it?
Who moved?
So I move, I'll, I move to adjourn.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
I abstained from the, uh, Youth Foundation Award, because my wife's...